It is six o'clock. I will call the August eighth, 2023, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. Before we get started this morning, or this evening, Mr. Terry is out of state for work. He has requested to call into the board meeting. Per our policy, his admittance will be granted unless there's any opposition. All right. Mr. Terry, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I can. Thank you all.
All right. All right. Tonight, we have Reverend Tim Irving from the Withfield Baptist Church to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious Lord, we do thank you for a time and a place that we can gather together, discuss the business of this county. I want to pray, Lord, that you pour down your knowledge, you pour down your wisdom, you pour down your common sense upon us, upon this board, and upon those who have attended tonight, that they might hear your wisdom, and they might decide what needs to be done in this county in the best possible way. Lord, we do thank you for what you've done for us, and how you continue to protect us and watch over us in all that we do. We ask these things in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First item on the agenda is citizens' time, regular citizens' time. We didn't have anybody signed up for that, so I'll close citizens' time. And tonight, we have a sports resolution honoring Maggie Minton of the George With High School tennis team. Maggie, if you'll come forward, I lost you in the crowd.
With County Resolution 2023-26, a resolution honoring Maggie Minton of the George With High School girls tennis team. Whereas George With High School senior Maggie Minton competed in outstanding, completed an outstanding 2023 tennis season, and whereas Maggie advanced to the Virginia High School League Class 1A State Championship of Virginia Tech on June 10th, 2023, and whereas Maggie defeated Madison Green of Middlesex 6-0-6-1 to capture the 2023 Class 1A State Championship singles title, and whereas, as a two-time back-to-back state singles champion, Maggie led the George With team to the state championship final match, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Maggie Minton for her outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now, therefore be resolved, the With County Board of Supervisors present this regularly, resolution to Maggie Minton in recognition and honor over 2023 girls' state tennis champion title, and wishes her much success in future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated in the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this eighth day of August, 2023. Signed, Brian W. Walt, Chair. And I'd like to make that motion.
All right. Have a motion to approve Resolution 2023-20, or -26 for Ms. Maggie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Minton. Maggie, you didn't have, you didn't realize that many people in With County liked tennis. You drew a pretty good crowd.
Thank you, Maggie, and good luck.
Congratulations.
Good luck in your college endeavors.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is our public hearing for proposed siting agreements for JCR Solar and HSR Solar, and Mr. Baer, Mr. Hankins, either one wants to read the public hearing notice.
I'll be glad to read it. With County Board of Supervisors notice of public hearings. Notice is hereby given that the With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 8, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. or as soon as practical thereafter, in the boardroom of the With County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, 24382, for the purpose of giving citizens and persons an opportunity to appear and present their view on the following items. A, a proposed siting agreement between JCR Solar LLC and With County, Virginia pursuant to Virginia Code 15.22316.8 in connection with a solar facility proposed by JCR Solar LLC to be constructed on the following county parcels, 75-5-45C, 75-87, and 75-94 off Polly Flatwoods Road in the Lebmines Magisterial District. Public hearing B, a proposed siting agreement between HSR Solar LLC and With County, Virginia pursuant to Virginia Code 15.22316.8 in connection with the solar facility proposed by HSR Solar LLC to be constructed on the following county parcels, 27-4-5A, 27-4-4B, 27-4-3, 27-4-4, a portion of 28-1C, and a portion of 28-1 off Turley Farm Roads in the Fort Chisel Magisterial District. Any persons who wish to comment may appear in person at the meeting, may submit comments via electronic mail to Martha Collins, County Clerk, at ngcollins@withco.org, or by mail at 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, 24382. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of Supervisors may approve the proposed siting agreements and authorize signing. A copy of the draft of siting agreements can be reviewed at the County Administrator's Office located at 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, 24382, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., holidays excluded. Boarder, With County Board of Supervisors, Stephen DeBaer, County Administrator.
All right. Mr. Hankins, before we get into public comment, do you want to add anything? I know you've
Yes, sir, I can.
Been over the board.
I can preface it for you if you'd like. Do you rather I be here or at the podium for this? I'll stay where I'm at then. Virginia is experiencing a rapid growth in solar farm development. With County is one of the very few counties in Virginia that does not have a zoning ordinance. And if you do not have a zoning ordinance, you cannot have a solar ordinance that controls how solar develops. That leaves you with two methods under state code that solar applicants can use to apply to counties to locate their facilities within the county. The first is the process that was used when the Foster Falls project developed through Savion a few years ago, and that's going through the Planning Commission, having a determination from the Planning Commission that the development is substantially in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan. Since that process, the state has added a second one, and that is the one that allows us to enter into siting agreements with solar developers. That lets us spell out some expectations, lets us do some things that we would be able to do under zoning if we had it. We don't have any sort of zoning or land use guidance or land use protections, so this is our best shot at giving those protections to the people in our communities. So with those two methods, the applicants, in this case, HSR and JCR, both LLCs, have gone this route. Over the last 16 months, we've negotiated out terms for that development to take place. We bring that to you for your consideration. Both of these, you know, we've asked for pretty significant documentation demonstrating what the impact would be to the Viewshed, particularly from the New River Trail and from Pepper's Ferry Road. In July, the applicant submitted their studies and the final draft of the proposed terms under this agreement. You've had the chance to read those. They will make voluntary payments to the county to offset capital, public safety, and inspections impacts. The state code says that if you accept those voluntary payments, that you can use them for things that are in your budget, in your capital improvement plan, or for the expansion of broadband. And in our case, since Point Broadband is expanding broadband through the county under the VATTI grant, we've really taken that one off the table, so it would be used to fund either something that's in the budget or something that's in the capital improvement plan, again, if you choose to accept the terms that we've presented to you. The agreements have been reviewed by your county attorney and your staff, and the counsel for the applicant is here and can present information on both projects and answer your questions. So if you don't mind, I'll introduce Mr. John Puvak with Gentry Lockrakes and Moore, the counsel for the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you all doing? I'm going to, because as Mr. Hankins said...
Let me stop you right there before you get started. You're not a citizen of With County, are you?
No, sir.
Okay. Per our public hearing, we give our citizens five minutes, so you've got five minutes.
Sure. Again, John Puvak, happy to be here on behalf of Megawatt Farming. I'll go quickly. In terms of, as Mr. Hankins mentioned, Virginia is obviously expanding in solar development. With County has had some interest, has had some prior projects. I was before you a couple of years ago on that prior project, so happy to be here again. Because this project hasn't been really in public review yet, I'm going to go through the projects real quickly before we talk about the reason why we're actually here is the site agreement. So first project, JCR, off Polly Flatwoods Road. It's a 16-megawatt project, so in terms of scale, much smaller projects than With County has seen in the past. In terms of final design, I'm going to go through some of these, since I have five minutes here. This is a conceptual site plan. It just shows a sort of proximity to New River, the trails marked on there. In terms of the shading areas, just be areas where solar panels could be placed. It's all conceptual design at this point. Final design would not be figured out until a later date. Some key factors of JCR is that it would be mostly timber property, so well buffered, could preserve significant buffers there. We've worked with the county, as Mr. Hankins said, over 16 months, to provide a significant setback, 250 setback from New River Trail. County staff asked us to look at Viewshed analysis. We submitted all those at the county and demonstrated there will be no view from the trail or from 177 Bridge. The money that we talked about can be used towards anything that the county desires. What's key about these projects is they don't require any public services. So this is something that's on an isolated piece of land. It doesn't require any public service whatsoever. All these projects generate solar power, and then it interconnects, what's called interconnection, into the grid. And just like a coal-fired plant, or a nuclear plant, or a hydro facility, just another source of energy that gets mixed into whatever the ultimate user of the energy is. Interconnection is that term where it connects into the grid. And also, what's great about these projects is both of those have interconnection facilities that are on-site, so you're not going to have off-site transmission going elsewhere through the county. I talked about the site plan quickly for JCR, but this again just gives you an idea, conceptually, of what it looks like. The other project is HSR. It's off Turley Farm Road in the Fort Chisel District. Again, a area of the county that is well set back. The engineering design, preliminary design, just shows solar panels, again, to achieve the output that we're projecting for this. So when we go in for the output, that's basically saying, here's what we think the project will produce on an annual basis, and here's what the grid can hold in that area. So again, this just shows, again, a conceptual layout there. The point of interconnection, again, is shown down off Turley Farm Road. This project also is set back well, 225 feet from any residence. It's a, I have a picture here that sort of shows the outline of, from Pepper's Ferry Road, so you have to look real closely. This is the project before it's constructed, and this would be the project after it's constructed. So you can barely see that gray area. That's over a mile away. So again, toggling back and forth there to show you the visibility from Pepper's Ferry Road. Again, no demand for public services. Interconnection is going to be located on-site on this project. So again, that gives you, again, going quickly, a high-level view of the projects. Just to talk about what else besides With County, so we obviously need to come to With County. As Mr. Hankins said, we took this route to try to come to the county and essentially negotiate a contract to make these projects go forward. We feel like we could come to the Planning Commission and the board to go to the comprehensive plan, but the site agreement approach has been used by lots of developers. I've probably done 40 of these in the last couple of years, where we've been able to come to an agreement, and again, as Mr. Hankins said, give With County the benefit of these projects without having zoning. So the items that we put in the site agreement are items that you normally would have to adopt a zoning ordinance. So again, we're giving the county the benefit of the zoning ordinance there with additional financial consideration. This is not the last review. There'd be additional review by DEQ, what's called a permit-by-rule process that goes through numbers of state agencies. It's a rigorous review that reviews everything from engineering design to impacts on wetlands, to impacts on the river, to the trail, and every state agency's involved in that. So that project, that still has to happen, but the local process has to happen first. Then we would then come back to the county for site plans, for erosion incentive control, go back to DEQ for stormwater management, ultimately to the county for building permits. So this is still early in this project in terms of life cycle and development. There's plenty of review still to be done. Another key aspect of these projects that I always want to talk about is water. People get concerned about how you manage water, whether it's erosion incentive control or stormwater. We deal with erosion incentive control during construction, right? So runoff, perimeter controls. With County adopts its own erosion incentive control ordinance, so we'd be bound by that. We would have an ESC plan. We come forward. We'd be responsible for maintaining all those controls. And then there'd be a stormwater management plan that had to be followed during construction and during operations. So again, robust review. There's processes in place. There's bonding in place for both of those items. This is just a picture of a single-axis tracker system, not this, but again, a, what we would expect to be installed here, tracker panels that sort of tilt. So that just goes you a picture there.
All right. That's, your five minutes is up, sir. If you would, leave that presentation with, oh, do you have it? Okay.
Yeah, and I'm happy to answer questions about the site agreement itself. Again, you have a site agreement in front of you, so we just ask for your approval of site agreements.
I do have one question. Why would the local, why would the locality have to approve it before DEQ would approve it?
A prerequisite against the permit-by-rule process is that you have all local permits in place. So the local, DEQ requires a local certifying authority to basically submit a form to the PBR that say, and again, most counties where you have zoning, that you have all discretionary permits in place. So that's why we're doing that before coming to DEQ, because it's required.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will open the public comments section on the JCR solar project. I'll call you up, and as I said, you'll have five minutes. The first person we have signed up is Ms. Susan Branskin.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. Once again, as you all know, we were here a few years ago when you all made your last decision, and our community and our family is dealing with the heartache from that decision, with the degradation of resources, the clearcutting of the timber, the carbon that it's emitting, the erosion incentive control from it. It was not well thought out with that one. With County is made up of 465 square miles with 2.88 square miles as water and an estimated population of 28,000. With County continues with this solar. You're going to be a black abyss. You're not going to have any community here. You're not going to have family here, because all you're going to have is solar. There's going to be no resources, no water. What are you going to do with your kids and your grandkids if this continues? With County is known for its scenic beauty, its resources, its abundant outdoor recreational activities. It's surrounded by the Blue Ridge Mountains along with historical significance and the importance of the mines, the Shot Tower, the New River State Trail Park, and the New River itself and Red Creek. The New River and Red Creek are your all's main water sources for your community, and they can be impacted by it. The New River is the second oldest river in the world. Our own seal includes the Shot Tower, the mountains, the New River, and the trees to represent the beauty of the area and our history. Agriculture is still one of the most prominent industries in With County, ranking in the top 10 in livestock counties. Agricultural commodities accounted for 92% of all income, with the remaining 8%, and that came from running ad clips. With County in 2017 had a total of 819 farms. You don't now. You had 151,563 acres with a market value and product sold of 65 million. The recent survey for With County noted 90% of the population wanted to retain their beautiful landscapes, history, outdoor activities, and small-town values. Wonder our future generations have? The answer is they don't. You may ask what all this has to do with green energy such as solar and wind. As you've recently seen in the news, many areas have pricing increases as well as difficulty in obtaining or keeping food supplies. Walmart doesn't grow your food. The farmer does. It comes from our farming families, and they're being taken by renewable energies. I'm one of those multi-generational farm families that's been impacted by this. I understand the importance of protecting the land, resources, and water now, and for our future generations. If this is gone, there's no future. Solar energy is not as green as what they think. From the Institute of Energy, solar at best is 22.2% efficient and effective in areas with all your sun, which With County does not have. When the sun stops shining, the panels stop producing, and generation continues only briefly after sunset. It takes more energy to mine, manufacture, and transport quartz to silicon to make the solar panels that are produced by them. It also takes twice the amount of coal to produce one solar panel than it does to heat a home. Manufacturing processes use hazardous materials such as sulfuric acid, phosphorus gases, which are extremely difficult to recycle. Panels have a shelf life of 20 to 30 years and is 300 times more toxic waste per unit of electricity generated than a nuclear power plant with lead, chromium, and cadmium that leaks in the water supply and can create nervous system disorders, as well as increases the risk of carcinogens, and that's from the National Center of Biotechnology. Each ton of polysilicon produced for panels produces four tons of silicon tetra chloride, which is a toxin that can cause in topsoils and make plant growth unsuitable, and that's for Scienceing.com. It takes a solar panel one to three months to offset the energy required to deal with the toxic waste in its production. Increase in the EMF radiation from solar panels has also led to increases in liver and brain cancer. The German food garden institute write, contrary to previous assumptions, pollutants such as lead or carcinogenic cadmium can almost be completely washed out of the fragments over a period of several months. Solar panel glass cannot be recycled due to impurities such as plastic lead, cadmium, and antonym. Wind turbines, they kill birds and views, and there'll be 720,000 blade materials if you're thinking about the wind. Forbes discussed that if solar panels are so clean, why do they produce so much toxic waste? The problem with solar panel disposal will explode with full force in two or three decades and wreck the environment because of its huge amount of waste. Leaching from boken panels damages natural environments such as hailstorm, tornadoes, hurricanes, earthquakes, and it decommissioning is a big concern. Puerto Rico had the second-largest solar farm responsible for 40% of energy, and it lost a majority of its panels during the hurricane. This creates hazardous conditions for cleanup, the future of the land, and delays restoring power. Recycling is not economically feasible. Solar is not environmentally conscious, because the carbon dioxide emissions along with nitros, 17,200 times more potent than greenhouse gas effects. It takes between 3.5 acres to 16.5 acres to produce 1 megabyte of generating capacity, and it takes 28 to 34 solar panels for one home. Solar is mainly only used for portions of household because it's unsuitable for appliances like air conditioners or evens that require high current use. If it's connected to a local grid, it must have an automatic shutdown feature, as it can create lethal doses for workers repairing the damage. High voltage it produces creates environmental degradation, loss of natural habitats and resources. Precious topsoil resources are lost with grading, and also with the solar panels themselves, as it's 5 degrees cooler under the panels, creating changes in the natural ecosystem. By building solar on agricultural land, we are eliminating livelihoods, local feed production, as well as revenue. Local agriculture also has to compete for water sources with solar thermal plants, as they use vast quantities, and it again competes for our water tributaries. The construction process for solar has detrimental effects on the environment and the production of raw materials. And Virginia Tech just regot a 3.4 million grant from DEQ to understand the impacts of water and soil erosion from solar farms. It's never been studied before, but DEQ gave them the grant to study it. So you know there's impacts.
All right. Ms. Branskin, that's your time's actually broken a bit over.
So I'm asking you all to please, in your plans of plan, it says you all have to be good stewards of your resources. You need to be a good steward of your resources, because Mr. Burnett has been there, and he's seen the cost of solar.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next person we have signed up is Eric Crowgie. Mr. Crowgie, and I will apologize if I butcher anybody's name. Just correct me.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And I don't have any such eloquent presentations as Ms. Branskin had. But what I want, what my main concern is, is that I have drank the solar Kool-Aid, and we put in a solar project here in With County. And having done so, I've subjected myself to hundreds of thousands of dollars of liens being placed on me. I've had threat of lawsuits through the companies. But the main thing that I'm concerned about is what this board will do for With County to keep it from being a mining site in the next 30 years. Because basically, what they're doing in our project, even though DEQ was involved, even though we had the permit-by-rule, even though we had an erosion incentive control plan, they came in, they graded off all the topsoil and didn't replace it. Now, it takes 100 years to create one inch of topsoil. And this company that we dealt with, even though they were supposed to be following the plan, they destroyed all of it. So now, they've hired, had to hire Dr. Lee Daniels from Virginia Tech, a mining reclamation company, or individual doctor, to try to come in and figure out how to replane this mining site. And that's what it is. It's basically a mining site. As Ms. Branskin pointed out, Virginia Tech has just initiated a $3.4 million study on what's going to happen to these sites. My suggestion is, is that you guys, and young lady, you know, we go down the interstate, we're driving down the interstate, we see, go through a construction zone, they say, well, the fines double in this area. So why not triple or 10 times the fines to these companies that don't return it to this proper configuration? Don't take all the topsoil away. I know we don't have zoning in this county to protect us from this, but also, we need to be cognizant of the type of panels that they are putting on. As Ms. Branskin pointed out, these panels, when they're, and they break during hailstorms and that sort of thing, and they will, you know, affect our soil, which affects our water supply, which affects New River, and therefore. But what I'm asking you, as a board, what safeguards are you going to put in place that we don't end up with a, basically a strip mine at each one of these sites that is, you know, they're coming down the pipe, and there's more than one, you know, here in the county right now. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowgie.
I do look forward to hearing your response as to what you're going to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowgie, if you don't mind, ask a question. With the project, when you done your project, how many times has that company changed hands?
We started with an American company. They sold to another American company, and then the last company was an Israeli company. And let it be noted, they do not have American values. They do not adhere to American, our standards. But that doesn't mean any one of these projects can't be sold. They're just like a mortgage.
I knew it changed hands, and I just, I was, so. All right. Next person we have signed up to speak is Cody Jones.
How are y'all today? So just a little background, I'm an engineer from Virginia Tech. I am an alumni. I just graduated back in May. But I don't want to approach this from an engineering standpoint. That's what everybody's been doing and looking at from an ecological standpoint. I'd like to go back through a little bit of With County's history. So this is a rhetorical question, but how many in this room is the descendant of a coal, a zinc, or a lead miner? I'd say a good portion of us are. We all remember the ill-ecological effects and the elastic impact that the mines left on Appalachia and the surrounding area. The mines damaged the land, poisoned the water, and destroyed the health of those that worked there. Those mines exploited the good, hard-working people of this part of America. The mines were allowed to operate this way because our elected officials The mines were allowed to operate this way because our elected officials sold this part of the country out and looked the other way while the people of Appalachia suffered. In my personal opinion, the same thing is happening again with these solar farms. We learned nothing from the past and are doomed to repeat it, but this time with solar. The solar will damage the land, possibly cause those with sensitivities to become sick, and will lock up good arable land for a generation. These leases are 15, 25, 20 years. That is an entire generation of young homebuyers, young farmers that cannot get access to this land, and that is the future of With County. That is your grandchildren, that is your children. They can't get this land because they're now leasing it up, locking it up, selling it to foreign countries, different states, different individuals, and the actual constituents that you were elected to protect cannot get access to that land any longer, or at a reasonable rate that is actually affordable. We are getting priced out of our own county and have to look elsewhere to move, especially out west. I ask that you do not sell out our county again. Please, use all the options available to you and protect your constituency from our land being destroyed and covered by an imperfect energy solution that's not even going to bring in the jobs that the mines did. These solar companies, they aren't bringing in the jobs like the mines did for the actual people that live in this county. They're just here to take our resources and give very little back. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. All right, that's all we have signed up for the JCR solar project, so we'll move on to the HSR solar project. And the first person we have signed up is William Nguyen. And while he's making his way up there, we also had, was it five comments emailed? And were you one of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought I said that's...
I wanted to make sure it was public record.
Oh, that's...
I will pass, this is my response, just to make it easy. I'll pass around to you guys if you need it, if you'd like. I'm also aware that I may extend my five minutes a little bit if possible. The county in HSR Megawatts has had 18 months, I think is what he said, to prepare. I've had five or six days with no resources. Honestly, I'm a little nervous being up here, and probably a little emotional because this affects my livelihood and my farm. So while, I'm sorry, I missed your... He painted a picture of what the solar farm would look like from Pepper's Ferry Road. I will let you know, this is my view 150 feet from my front door of the first track. I think it's 271, something like that. That's 150 feet, including a 25-foot buffer. That view will never be seen again if this farm is repurposed. Here's another picture from the old Hegy Bee plot, when it was a farm, a farm. In the back, you'll see Brushy Mountain and other areas of the area. Here, you'll see our future. This is a young girl that came to my farm September of 2020. She had never touched a chicken before. We spent four hours in my chicken coop until she could catch a chicken. She has since been back to my farm over 15 times to touch those very chickens. We talked about stormwater runoff and how they will control it. Again, I'm not slandering them, I'm not saying anything, I'm just basing on what I know based on eight years of living at Turley Farm. This is on an insignificant rain. This is my wife coming home from a 12-hour shift at Turley Farm. That was just an insignificant rain. Underneath her is our private bridge, built by Lee Mr. Ray. Here is a rain event on Memorial Day, just two months ago, from a dry branch. It's totally impassable. I don't know how much debris came down the creek that day. Here is a picture I took, I took with my drone, November 12, 2020. That's natural runoff. I'm sorry, I'm... That is natural runoff from the four tracks adjoining Turley Farm Road. How do you control that? Once you strip away, as Ms. Branskin said, the soil, you compact it, you put up solar panels that are impervious. Where does that water go? As you can see, it goes right through my field, contaminating my pastures, the orchard I planted eight years ago. It floods Cove Creek, Reed Creek, and the New River Valley watershed. I don't know what the answer is. I think there are options available to the county other than on lead mines or Turley Farm. I don't know the history of With County. I've only been here for 15 years. Sorry, y'all. Sorry about that. I don't know the history of With County as far as development. I gather that 20 years ago, the county purchased Progress Park for industrial development, commercial development. Driving through there, there seems to be plenty of areas in-site visible to the public that would be ideal, and we could tout them as a benefit to those companies without erasing our heritage or destroying our future or our present. There's hundreds of acres right off of Community Boulevard that is for sale. Why not use those? Why do we have to hide them in my front yard? I don't know, but that's common practice. There's one big challenge. Our road is a private road. Who grants access to those sites? Each individual landowner can, obviously. How do you get to Track 28, which is owned by Tully, Mr. Tully? He adjoins, but he doesn't have access to our road. There's a lot of questions to answer. I don't honestly know what a siting agreement is. I'm not a lawyer. My real estate lawyer is Mr. Farthing. Obviously, I can't ask him because there's a, there's a big ethics violation here. I'm kind of at a loss, I'm sorry. I guess in the future, I ask that you think about the impacts of your decisions tonight, because with a stroke of a pen, my livelihood will be changed forever. It will be non-existent on day one of the construction. I can't have visitors to my farm with heavy equipment operating, with pile drivers driving. The siting agreement is very intentionally vague, I believe, just in my opinion. It says it can go sunrise to sunset, basically, up to six days a week, in accordance with the noise ordinance. The only problem with that is, the noise ordinance stipulates if it's a commercial activity, it may be up to 24 hours a day. Living a mile from Gatorade at 2:00 in the morning, I can hear the trucks running. It's going to be like 150 feet from my bedroom. I don't know. There are lots of options, and this is from my heart and not what I presented to you. So I've missed some things. I ask that you support me and all the With County residents and the small-family farms. Preserve their quality of life, preserve their health. As a desert storm veteran, I'm just now learning of the effects of contaminants in the soil that are stirred up and fine particles of dust. My neighbors will all be downwind of that. It will be literally in my door. Things like DDT, which Mr. Hegy may have used as recently as 1995, I don't know the farming history, but if he had a gallon of it in his barn, he'd eat it with weeds. Maybe it's there. It looks like it's got a 30-year life, shelf life, or half-life. I don't know, I'm not a chemist. The derelict structure that feeds my dry branch on Track 27, whatever it is, is probably 50 or 75 years old. I'm sure there's lead in it from the paint. I'm sure there's asbestos. I'm convinced there's probably a coal-fired stove in there somewhere that's contaminated the ground with heavy metals that don't go away, that wash down the creek, that go into the river, that go into my lungs, into their lungs. While I can't speak for them, I think they don't, they would not like that. And I'm kind of rambling now because I'm really nervous.
Well, Mr. Nguyen, of course, your time's up, but we do have your email and your hard copy, and it was very well-written, so...
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. The next person we have signed up is Rick, is it Kaufman?
I'm here, because I don't have an elegant speech prepared as any of the others have had. I don't even have any notes. But the first thing I would like to say is, I've got some very good neighbors and some very good friends. I want to keep y'all. So you hear me talking, don't take it personal, but this is my personal view of the project that's going on out there. I've lived back at Turley Farm Road for seven or eight years. I still own the property back there. I just built a brand-new house on Mudlick Road, which strategically placed on the bank of the block where I see, guess what? My beautiful view right now is, will be, this project. The sun rises in the morning up over those hills. They will then rise up over solar panels. The view shed that was from Pepper's Ferry that was up here on this picture, I'm sorry, but I can find a better view shed from Pepper's Ferry. There's a lot of places on Pepper's Ferry, but you can see that a whole lot better than the picture was right there. And I guess view shed is a big thing on, for me. The other thing that really, really troubles me is, like we shared by the others here, where's our county going to end up at? I've had neighbors already speaking of leaving. This Turley Farm neighborhood, good neighbors. If this happens, they're out. It's going to continue to happen if this continues to go on. There's two things that I can see in this project that are appealing. Number one is money for the county. Number two is money for the landowners. Other than that, I don't see it. And I'm not judging any of y'all for the decision you make, I'm just saying, that's the way I see it. Anything else that I see in this is very, very unappealing. I own in the, by the, by the way of property lines or right-ofways, almost two miles adjoining these tracks of land. And if you don't think that's going to devalue my property, I know y'all say it doesn't, but if this property was to come up for sale, and somebody come in from out of state to look at this property to buy it, who is going to buy their dream piece of property beside a solar farm? You know, it's real to me. The other thing is, most of this land is higher elevation than I am, and the sediment and erosion control that was talked about, I saw the project on Lover's Lane when it rained. I see it when it still rains. All I know to say is, these hills and hollers are higher than they are over there. And if this stuff comes down on me, there's going to be a problem at more than one location. So the private road is an issue I see, the creek crossing down there. If there's culvers put in, like there was for the property, for the gas line project a few years ago, the flooding will be even worse than it has been because of the debris plugging up the culver pipes. I don't know what the plan is to get in there, I'm assuming it's culver pipes. There's just big problems I see. Me and my boys enjoy here hunting, enjoy the farm back there. The wildlife is going to be altered. I know in the plan, it says that, you know, wildlife ways are going to have to, I mean, these alleys are going to have to be open, and wildlife's going to have to be able to have access to get through, but it's going to alter it. That's a small thing. But the impact that it has for me, my farming operation, my kids, and the community as a whole, I just, I just really hope y'all take a good look at this. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. All right, the next person we have signed up is Eugene Carr.
My views already been expressed, so I'm not going to speak.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, move on to, is it Janet Wright?
The decision, this decision is solely upon the board's supervisors. If the board visits Lover's Lane Solar Farm, which is of August of 7, it is out of compliance with DEQ's regulations, and listens to Eric Crowgie, who will vote no, Eric Crowgie, you will vote no to letting HSR, LSC, and Megawatt Farming Solar Farm invade Turley Farm Road. Due to the proximity to Cove Creek, which feeds into Reed Creek and then into New River, the runoff from these solar farms threatens the water supply for Gatorade, Pepsi, and the citizens of the county and beyond. The DEQ report of environmental violations by Intergex costs over $62,000, $62,000 in fines and With County alone. Now, that's who is on Eric Crowgie's farm, just so, because we go from name to name. While salutations across Virginia is only 90,000. So if you look at that math and put it into Perceptive, that gives you an idea of the violations on Eric Crowgie's farm on Lover's Lane. This was as July 2022, and they're out of compliance now, so there will probably be more fines. The fines and violations reflect the potential for lawsuits against With County for contaminated water, for erosion of the land, and other environmental impacts. Unfortunately, with today's technology, we have worked on the site agreement plan, and I tried to email it to my representative, and it didn't go through.
Okay.
So I do want that put on record. I have this many concerns, a tremendous amount of concerns, if you read the site agreement in detail. It's given the power to the solar companies, not to the board, not to the county. I mean, it's, as my husband and I, when we read it, it said it makes our hair hurt. It's 12 pages, and there's, as I said, I would like that to be on file, so those concerns can be considered by the board, as well as the attorney, to make sure that if this has to go through, and you won't vote no, that you'll at least protect us as much as you can with the site agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wright, would you give it to Ms. Collins so we could, she could make a copy of it? Is that all right?
I will send it electronically. Do my notes...
Okay. That's fine. Yeah, I'd like to see it.
Thank you.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure we got a copy of it.
I will, I will get a better electronic address, because we can highlight the concerns that we have, and the technology just didn't work from into that.
I'm right there with you. Thank you, ma'am.
I can also pick it up from you if you need me to.
All right, next person we have signed up is Randy Wright. You've got big shoes to fill, Mr. Wright.
Yeah, sure do. Gosh. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Randy Wright, and I live at 819 Mudlick Road in With County. I have a home on Turley Farm Road, which is directly across from Progress Industrial Park. a home on Turley Farm Road, which is directly across from Progress Industrial Park. I found out from a friend on Facebook last Tuesday that a large solar farm was going next door, but happened to notifying adjacent landowners when you are changing their lives forever. Turley Farm Road is, as the name implies, a narrow, private dirt road leading from Pepper's Ferry Road to the farm on the banks of Cove Creek. The road goes across a homemade bridge. All landowners have a deed of right of way for ingress and egress to Pepper's Ferry Road. The land is agricultural, residential, and recreational. This farm will change usage to industrial. Much of the farm has been leased to a solar LLC, which plans to build a 19.9 megawatt generating plant. All of this land drains into Cove Creek, then Reed Creek, and New River. This means the chemicals from the solar panels, construction equipment, and erosion will go downhill to Cove Creek. This polluted sediment will be expensive to clean up. DEQ finds the guilty party, but the damage has been done. Some of the solar panels contain cadmium, telluride, and heavy metals, which along with batteries can leak into the soil and water. Studies are being done on effect on whales. This property joins Jefferson National Forest. Solar system fires have more than doubled between 2015 and 2018. This was due to poorly designed or constructed products and poor installation practices by the solar LLCs. The list of LLCs who will eventually own this project is long and hard to trace, but mostly less than two years old. Any of these LLCs can sell all or part, transfer assets, or simply walk away without the board of supervisors' consent and knowledge. The next LLC may have OSHA violations, environmental violations, or questionable employment practice, but the board cannot interfere with our operation on our behalf. If approved, construction can be 14 hours or more per day. The power plant makes noise that can be heard for 150 feet. All this for the next 35 years. I won't be here, but my failure to speak up for Cove Creek and the Meadow would prevent my resting in peace. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
All right. Next person we have is Terrence McAllister.
Did I get that right, sir? Yes, sir, you did. Good evening, Terrence McAllister, 971 Mud Lake Road. I apologize beforehand that I haven't met a lot of these people. And as Mr. Kaufman said, talked about people moving in this area, I'm one of those people. To give you a little bit of background, I know my time is limited, but I'm going to. I'm a retired police lieutenant from North Las Vegas and Nevada. I retired in 2019 and decided where I wanted to take my family and my grandkids. My mom and dad are from Chilhauwe, which brought me to this area. I used to come back here all the time. And one of the big things that brought me to this area is a very thing, same thing these fine folks have mentioned, this view shed that we keep talking about. It's that view shed that brought me here. It brought me to sell a piece of property that I had out in Las Vegas and decided to bring my family out here. I almost bought a property on Turley Farm Road, and I'm almost thankful to say today, I'm glad I didn't, though I didn't realize at the time that when I bought my piece of property, I was only about a mile away from that property on Mud Lake Road because of where it goes down, and I wasn't familiar with the area. That being said, I spent 25 years protecting people in my city, and never in a million years did I think I was going to move to a community like this and have to look at protecting certain things like this. I never thought the day would come that I'd drive down Lover's Lane, which I didn't know anything about. People used to say, "Did you drive down Lover's Lane? You know you can get there." And I drive down Lover's Lane, and I go there one day, and I see this solar plant, solar facilities. I'm like, what is this, and where did this come from? I can tell you that when I moved here, I do my homework about where I moved, and I looked into comprehensive plans and communities and things like that. And one of the things I didn't come across was things like this. I did come across old deeds that claim that you can't have a trailer park, you can't have mobile homes, you can't have junk laying around, things like that. But I don't think we ever predicted the time would come that we'd have to worry about solar farms and things going up right next to us, that I guarantee you is going to impact, negatively impact our property values. I can tell you that when I moved here, I know I've been working diligently to improve my property. I've got 88 acres that I deal with just right over, right at Cove Creek there. And I know that studies have shown, and I only got some information about this last night, so my preparation's going to be short. But I can tell you that the studies that I've looked at, I think they're skewed. The studies that say the property values aren't impacted, they mostly impact cities where they're looking at. They're not agricultural lands, beautiful countryside that we have here. I know when I read your guys', I tried to read 140-some pages on your agenda last night to go through all this stuff and look at these fine people's pictures and things. And I know they talk about they've done a plan and a study, but come on, how skewed is that? We're not even using third-party entities to do those types of plans, to do the, look into the impacts of this, which none of us know how much it's going to impact us. But one of the things that I do know is even on your board of supervisors' front page, it talks about protecting the community. I think Mr. Kaufman said it best, that there's only two people, two things that are going to be impacted here positively, With County gaining some money from this, and secondly, the landowner that's going to gain some money from this, as well as the company itself. They're the ones impacted. The ones that are going to be left hold the bag are the people around it. The one thing that I haven't heard, that I did hear them say earlier, that you can do whatever you want with the money. Well, I've heard no positive impacts about what the county intends to do with that money that's going to give it back to the community. I can tell you what taxes have gone through the roof and what energy rates have gone up. I don't see these people coming back throwing contributions to our energy company to be able to give us a reduction rate that may be a pill to swallow for some people, but it's not for me. You have, you have certain plans in place that when you, when you look at these community developments and these developments, they're in place for a reason. You have zoning requirements which are for a reason. So far, the state has come up with this two-pronged thing, well, there's, there's ways to circumvent this system. You can go to this public hearing thing and a site review and, and look at these different options. Well, come on, those plans are for a reason. It's for the protection of the community. That's what zoning and things are for as well. I pulled up a few things as I was listening to the people talk today. A comprehensive plan provides a vision for the future of the community along with the steps that are needed to make that vision a reality. It's a basis for land use regulations and provides a nexus between the community future vision and regulation of private property. The purpose of zoning, zoning ordinance is showing for the general purpose of promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and for further accomplishing the jeopardy of it. To these ends such ordinances should be designed to give reasonable consideration to each of the following purposes, and it goes on and on. But they're there for a reason. I don't think this is the form. I don't think it's the time. I think these are knee-jerk reactions to be able to hit people. I just applaud these fine people for stepping up, and I know someone talked about not being eloquent, not having written a document. All's on, I think what is important is that these people, people of all calibers, learn to step up and say something. Because I want to be heard and say that this is not right. I am against it. And I think Mr. Kaufman said it best, that it's going to, it's going to invoke and make people leave. I can tell you that I'm one of those people, because the whole reason I moved here was for things against these types of things. So, I am against it. I want my voice heard, and I hope that other people step up and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all we have signed up for the public comment period, so I'll close the public comment period. Mr. Hankins, do you have anything to add?
Only if you have questions about the siding agreements or the processes. And I think Mr. Farthing and I can address processes. If you've got, you know, process questions that you want to ask, want us to respond to, we'd be glad to do that.
Well, does anybody have any questions before I get up on my soapbox? And I give no guarantee of how long that's going to take.
I have a question. So I get a little bit confused. I know you explained it earlier. Is my mic working?
It is.
I get a little bit confused about, you know, the, the Foster Falls project went through the planning commission, and this, we're going a different route. So if we were to vote no, can they go back and go through the planning commission?
My understanding is, yes, they can, but that would still come back to you.
But we do not have to vote for it. And then what happens?
It, it doesn't proceed.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody else have any questions? You'll probably have some after I get done.
That's why I'm waiting.
That's what I figured. It's probably not be, it won't be a surprise to Ms. Branscombe since the last time. And I have nothing against green energy. I enjoy taking my trash off every Sunday, but I don't want a landfill in With County. And if there's anything I can do to keep it from being here, then that, that's what I'm elected for. And I'm speaking from this seat, not as the chairman of the board. As the chairman of the board, I just steer the ship, and others might not agree with me, but I get to give you my piece and my thoughts. You know, as you got up here and spoke, and I was taking notes, you know, somebody said that, talked about learning from the past. And that's a, that's a, you know, that's a really good question. And six years ago, when I got elected to this board, I was 110% dead set against zoning. And I'm not sure if Mr. McAllister realizes this. I know he mentioned zoning. With County is one of three counties in Virginia that we don't have zoning. If the Dollar Store wants to build the first two-story Dollar Store out there in Stringtown, they can do it. We can't tell them no, you know. Somebody said, where's the county go? So here's my question. If we do not enact some type of land use guidance, which I like to call zoning lot, I don't want zoning to where this camp board or this county can say, hey, these are the colors you're allowed to paint your house. There's absolutely horror stories about zoning, and that's why people don't want it. But if you get on the Google, there's also a lot of horror stories about these solar farms, which is exactly why I'm not for. You know, like I said, I was put up here to represent the citizens. I've talked to everybody from farmers to people that live in the town of Withfield and don't have to worry about this. And the feedback I get is they're not in favor for. You know, believe it or not, and I know a lot of you have done research, and I have this argument every year because I make Mr. Baer compare our tax rates against everybody else's tax rates. With County's got the lowest tax rates in the area. Numbers don't lie. In saying that, we don't need the money. And in saying that we don't need the money, I refuse to sell out our citizens and the beauty of this county for any amount of money. So, y'all can do what you want to, but like I said, the same thing when Ms. Branscombe was up here before, I'm a no vote, or we can table it. But with that being said, we've got to have a serious discussion about some type of land use guidance, or this is going to keep going on. And eventually, I'm not going to be sitting here. You might not have a no vote. And both of these projects and the other projects haven't even happened on my end of the county. And I still get red-faced, because when it happens on my end of the county, I'm going to lose my mind. And Mr. Crowgey, I appreciate you getting up and speaking honestly about, you bought the car, but you didn't do your research. I've been there. It looked good on the lot, but...
I did, I did research with the challenges.
Well, and, and that's another problem I have, is, is all these companies change hands. They're all LLCs. Mr. Farthing, correct me if I'm wrong, LLC means limited liability. I don't like those two words when it comes to projects like this. It should be full liability. So, I'll step off my soapbox. Mr. Smith, I know you got something to say.
Well, and I'm just going to go with, build off of what Chairman Ball was talking about. I was elected to represent the people of the district. Some of these farms are in the district, the Fort Chisel district. I've received a lot of phone calls over the last couple of weeks, especially when this notice went out for this public hearing for people that's against the solar farm. Some people living on Turley Farm Road, some people not living on Turley Farm Road, some people living off of, of Pepper's Ferry Road. But there's a lot of people that doesn't want these farms. I'm not a big fan of the solar. It's no secret. I'm also not a big fan of zoning, because I think it's your property. You ought to be able to do what you want to with your property. However, to eliminate these types of meetings ever so often, something has to be done. The county is not, we don't have the tools in place to restrict just solar farms. And we can't just restrict solar farms. We can't do that. We've, we've talked about this the last time, when, when Ms. Branscombe was here for the one that's down in Foster Falls. It's, it's, it's an issue. I've been down to Foster Falls myself. It's, it's not pretty. I've been by Mr. Crowgey's farm. I was kind of shocked at how much earth that they moved when we seen that. Some of the folks that's in the rooms that owns these parcels, I know them very well and wouldn't do anything personally to offend any of them. But my, my responsibility is to do what's best for the, the district and everybody in the district. And it's, it's a tough decision to be in when you're sitting here, and you're looking at the, what we have to go by. I'm like Mr. Chairman Ball. I'm, you know, I'm not going to put that on my properties that my wife and I own. But I also don't want people telling me what I can and can't do on my own properties. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. But I have received a lot of phone calls. Some of them's not in my district. A couple of people after church said, hey, I'm not going to be able to make it, but I want you to know I'm against these solar farms. Because if we don't protect these generational farms, and there's quite a few of them in the county, that's, that's a tough spot to be in.
Yep. I agree with you, Mr. Smith. And it is, it's so tough because, you know, I also agree that you, you own a property, you should be able to do what you want with it. And that is, it's really tough to tell someone they can't do what they want with their property. But in this position, this is my sixth year, and I have always given it my best effort to be the voice for my area. So when I have all but won so far, phone call and email has been against it. It's a no for me because I'm the voice for my area. It's what my area wants. It's, that's how I vote, so.
In the Lead Mines District, we have probably the most amount of solar farms coming. And coming from the Lead Mines District, and being raised there, I have, third, I'm a third-generation farmer. My grandfather cut, cross-cut, cut ties off the farm to pay for it when he was 14. So, I do not like farmland going away forever. And so, you know, anything, I'm not for zoning either. However, we do feel that these conversations are happening more and more often, and that we really should consider all options on, on how to protect our farmlands and our residential areas, and how to balance that. And, and that is not an easy conversation. So, that's where it really... conversation. So that's where, really where I stand at is. And, and you know, going back to what Mr. Smith said about telling people, you know, what to do with their land, you know, sometimes we're that arm. And even though With County doesn't have zoning, it's been done in the past without mentioning any names. In the past, there's been some businesses that have popped up in the county and the citizens didn't agree with the services they offered or the products they sold. And I believe that was when you were on the board, Mr. Horni. And...
I've been here forever, so that's it.
I don't want to embarrass myself to go into detail, but, but the county took action and said, no more, because that's what the citizens wanted. And, you know, Mr. Wright talked about, you know, not being able to rest in peace. And Mr. McAllister talked about his, his children and grandchildren. Well, I don't have any kids. So what I do up here is, is my legacy in With County. And I would, I think I counted nine or 10 people that got up and spoke tonight. So I will ask you folks that when we do have that conversation about land use management or zoning light or whatever you want to call it, that you come back. And when people are throwing rocks at us because they think we're going to run around and measure how tall their grass is, that you take that podium and you tell them while we're looking at that. That's my only request because it gets awful lonely up here sometimes. But with that, you know, and again, I have nothing against green energy. I, I won't get on my rant about I don't like what the former governor done because I think he's basically sold Southwest Virginia out to green energy because we have to give them a tax break. They don't pay their fair share. So he can lower companies from the West Coast. And lo and behold, none of them's located in Southwest Virginia. They're all in Eastern Virginia. But that's a whole nother conversation. And with that, I'll, I'll be quiet. And does anybody else have anything, Mr. Horni?
The only thing I noticed, I know, I guess it's really to Scott or Matt. When the Foster Falls one came up, we ended up, basically it was, we had to prove that they did not meet our comprehensive plan, and that was the only way that we could keep them from, or something to that effect. If we vote no on this one, I mean, are we legally telling them they can't come and they won't be able to come at all?
So if you vote no on this, they have the right to apply to come through that process of asking the Planning Commission to find whether or not their proposal is compliant with the comprehensive plan. And they have a public hearing. And then they, the Planning Commission recommends to this board, you know, whether they believe it's compliant or not compliant with the comprehensive plan. And then you guys make that decision, whether you think that proposal is compliant with comprehensive plan or not. And that's their next ask, if they choose to continue to come and try to make this project go forward.
I was just, I was just under the impression that when Foster Falls came, that we basically didn't have a leg to stand on to tell them they couldn't. And now maybe we do have a leg to stand on.
Yeah, I'm not sure why you have that impression. They have to show they're compliant with the plan or not, right? So whatever a plan says, you're in the process of working on adopting a new one. But it just depends that the, the plan is fairly vague. So, you know, how you interpret that is a, you guys are the decision maker. So you interpret what that means to you.
All right. Any more questions or discussion?
No, sir.
So I guess I'll open the floor. I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the proposed siting agreement between JCR Solar LLC and With County, Virginia. Going once, going twice. All right, died for lack of emotion. Now I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the proposed siting agreement for HSR Solar LLC and With County. Going once, going twice. All right, died for lack of motion. All right, folks. At this point, we'll move on from the proposed siting agreements unless I hear a no from the board. I would like to take a five-minute recess.
I'm good with that.
All right. We'll be in recess for five minutes. All right, it is 7:21. I'll call us back to order. All right, folks, we're back on the record. So unless you want your conversations to be heard on YouTube. All right. Next item on the agenda is our payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices. All right, I have a motion from Mr. Cook. Do I have a second? Have a second from Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions, discussions, or any check that any board member wants to pull out? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with, Mr. Terry, are you still with us? Mr. Terry?
Can you hear me?
All right. What's your vote on the payment of invoices?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All right, so approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting, July 25th, 2023. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? All right. Before we vote, I will say I was at the beach. I appreciate Mr. Cook chairing the meeting. All right, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Right, we'll move into old business. Mr. Barr, do we have anything under old business?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving into new business, we have Mr. David Manley from the Joint Industrial Development Authority to give us some updates. Mr. Manley?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank y'all for having me this evening. I've got just a couple handouts. And I want to apologize for my phone going off earlier. Apparently, if you lean on the wrong button long enough, it calls 911. If you get any questionable calls, you'll know that was...
So does an Apple Watch when you're asleep in a recliner. Ask me how I know.
So apologies for that interruption earlier. Get all your handouts here and we'll get going. I don't know if it's hot in here. My blood pressure just got up.
It's hasty.
It's on air conditioning.
I spoke to Mr. Barr this afternoon, and he asked that I present sort of a comprehensive roundup of the past year or so. So I'm going to kind of go at a clip because I don't want to cut into your evening much more, but I do want to be comprehensive and answer any questions you might have. So stop me at any point. I want to be informal and conversational as much as possible. Thanks for letting me come and present. You know, one of our primary goals of joint ideas to provide a solid return on investment annually to our funding partners. And that's part of the reason I'm here tonight is just to talk about that. For those of you that may not remember John Matthews, our deputy director, and Jessica DeHart runs our office, and I'm very proud of the team we've put together over the past couple of years. Our board members include the following With County appointees. David Carpenter, who's our treasurer, excuse me, Matt Clark of Clark Precision Machine, Sherry Case with County Community Hospital, and retired industrial contractor Dennis Manuel. At the end of this year, we'll lose our two most senior members of the board, but we thank all of our board members for the time and expertise and service they've given to not only our organization but to With County too. The other appointees are Mike Cole, who represents the town of Royal Tree, and our chairman, David Couse, and Jeff Lucas, who both represent the town of Withfield. I want to sort of hit the high spots, the activities over the past year, talk to you about the projects we've been seeing. What we've done is our, in our organization, short as relates to our core responsibilities, what we're working on as an organization. Real estate, site development, looking forward to some upcoming activities. And I'll round it up with some economic benchmarks that sort of, I think, indicate a trajectory about the health of our economy here locally. First thing I want to jump into is just a quick review of sort of the types of projects we've been seeing. And this is from the beginning of this fiscal year, last July, well, sorry, last fiscal year, July 1 of '22, up until today. The types of projects we're seeing, three general manufacturing, three I would call high-tech manufacturing, one logistics project, one controlled environment agriculture. And then the bulk of what we saw, or one-third of the projects, were all related to electrical vehicle, electric vehicles. For, we did not have a good category to put in, which supposedly didn't get that far. The investment we've seen on projects has ranged on the low end. When I say the low end, that's, it's, it sounds kind of funny to say four and a half million dollar projects on the low end, but it is in terms of industrial projects, and the high end of about $600 million project. Average size being $116 million. Average job creation on all the 18 projects is about 300. Right now, of that 18, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. 11 of them are still active. Seven have either closed or we lost for some unknown reason. But we, we keep up with these on a regular basis. So if you might be interested to hear sort of what's interesting to us. Some selected highlights of the past year, and John developed this handout for you all over the last couple of days, just sort of highlights, again, it's the high spots of what we've been doing over the past year or so. I'm just going to pick a handful of things to cover. In December 2022, we adopted our refreshed strategic plan that was developed over a year plus of research and input gathering that helps us guide the overarching goal setting, day-to-day activities, and points out areas for improvement. Input from stakeholders, both the local and state level, helped inform the assessment of us and our recommendations for work going forward. One of the key goals that came out of it was to better align our mission and efforts with our regional partners, the Mount Rogers Regional Partnership, and our regional economic development organization. And we've begun that. We also want to continue to explore and leverage additional streams of funding to support economic development working with County. We have a good long list of to-dos from that strategic plan, and we'll, we work on those as time allows. In April, our deputy director, John Matthews, organized a housing summit for With and surrounding localities, and there is a handout that was for that summit that day. Has a little more information I'll be able to share at the time I've got. It was a tremendous success based on the connections that were made, the attendance, and really how it was received by all the attendees. This is a project we took on in response to the regional housing study, the Mount Rogers PDC funded. And the big takeaway from the housing study is that if we created not one more job in With County after today, we're already 1,000 housing units short today. And that's market rate rentals, that's single-family homes, that's workforce housing, all types, all price points, in-town, out-of-town, and everywhere. If you look at our website, madewithpride.org, there's, there's more details from that housing study available. At the summit, each locality that participated could craft its own messaging to the attendees, financiers, real estate professionals, developers, so on and so forth, contractors, and virtually all did. In May, we hosted a couple of events for the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond, and its president, Tom Barkin, he was here to discuss our local economy, business climate, housing, workforce, access to capital, and a number of other topics. There was a breakfast meeting followed by workforce business roundtable. We did a driving tour with County. And then in the afternoon, they hosted their own housing discussion with housing people from the region. In June, we exercised a purchase agreement for the building next door to us at 140 South First Street. It had declined to a, a state of repair that was, I'm going to say politely requiring intervention at, at that time. It sat on the market for about nine months before we started moving to, to acquire it. We developed a plan with partners of Virginia Housing and the HCD to acquire the property and then stabilize it. As part of that, we commissioned studies that were fully grant-funded, including Phase 1 environmental assessment, a feasibility study, a preliminary structural and engineering review, financial feasibility modeling, a boundary study and survey, and some preliminary site usage recommendations and sketch development. And since we're a public authority, we're able to leverage more public funds, and nearly 100,000 or more in-state grant funds have paid for all that work so far. We're able to leverage additional public funds as we go forward. We're currently receiving estimates for roof repair, which will further dictate how we approach cleanout and winterization. We did this not to take the place of some plant private investment, that's not our goal, but to kickstart it. And because we can access some additional public funds, like to put a roof on it, we think it will be more developable at that point. For those of you that can't quite put a finger on where that is, that's the former Summit School of Cosmetology, just across from the CenturyLink main office right beside us. And I would say, Mr. Chairman, you're probably right there. A few official daytime duties more than once, serving papers.
I'm familiar.
It was a, it was a frequent stop for, for our law enforcement professionals. Real estate, I do want to hit on site development while we're there. One issue that we're always facing is development of the next buildable, build-ready pad site in Progress Park. Last year, we applied for funds, but unfortunately were turned down for additional development for Lot 1. This year, should the budget get passed and should money come into position, we plan on asking your permission to apply for additional site development money to address the full grading of Lot 1. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but of all those projects I was mentioning a few minutes ago, 75% of them are Lot 1 projects and maybe a little bit more than that. One of the hurdles is the preparedness, the readiness sort of of the amount of acreage that's graded and available and what that costs. If we can leverage somebody else's dollars to help do that instead of us or doing that, that's always better. It's been a little bit of a deterrent for companies on what they'd have to do to get it ready to build. Just for your information, that's about 105 total acres on that parcel. And the pad that's been sketched out, it's not any sort of formal construction plan, would be 70 plus or minus acres. Our new website is be delivered next late, let's say that again. Our new website should be delivered late next month. Another issue coming up that we'll need to talk about, not immediately, but soon, is the sunsetting of the enterprise zone legislation. I think we've still got two or three years left on the one for here, but eventually that's going to sunset. And we want to, as a, as a profession, we want to take it on in the General Assembly soon. I just want to bring that to your attention. We may be asking for your voices on that as well. Enterprise zone is a very effective economic development tool, and we don't want to lose that tool in the next however many years. I handed out some graphs here. And when I started doing this a little over nine years ago, I started keeping track of some local economic benchmarks just to kind of monitor year over year to see what our trajectory is, how we're doing. I made them a little more digestible this year. I made them in graphical form. The first one I draw your attention to is the With County economic input-output. This is sort of our gross domestic product as a county. And 2014, when I first started keeping records, our output was about $1.3 billion. It peaked in 2017 at 1.525. And unfortunately, the way the records are kept, I've only got data as recent as 2021, backed up to 1.835 billion after a lot of the year before. Of course, that was new post-pandemic, and I have a feeling 2022 and 2023 will show pretty sharp increases and will probably meet, if not exceed, the 2017 mark. 1.385 billion for a county of 28,000 people is pretty good. Second page, and I'm always, this is one of my favorite ones, is the With County number of business establishments. And it's on the screen for everybody to see. In 2014, and these are taxpaying businesses registered to the Employment Commission, so we know that there are more businesses... so we know that there are more businesses out there, but these are the ones that can be tracked. 787 businesses in the county, and in 2023, the most recent numbers show about 910 businesses. It's a great increase. It's 15% or so, I guess. It's good because more people run more businesses, meaning there are more jobs, there's more opportunity for wealth creation, and a thriving entrepreneurial atmosphere is always indicative of a healthy local economy to people here and stakeholders outside the community. On the next page, another data point to follow is per capita income. And while we certainly acknowledge there's been wage inflation, where we were in 2014 versus today is a pretty healthy increase. 2014, you'll see, was 31,136, and we're up to almost 44,000 as of 2021. That, again, because of the way the data's kept, I don't have 2022 numbers yet, I hope those come out in September. A commonly used measure of economic health is the unemployment rate, and this is annual average unemployment, so there were highs and lows that aren't illustrated on here. 2014, the annual average unemployment was about 5.4%. In 2020, it peaked at 8%, and it was down to, thus far this year, the six, seven months we were able to measure, down to 3%. There was a, certainly a spike during COVID. We hit nearly 20%. I didn't write down what month that was. Where we are now, we were back in 1998, so we're mimicking the economic conditions we saw then. That was the lowest economic rate in the past 30 years, unemployment rate in the past 30 years. The lowest monthly figure we've ever hit was November of 2021, at about 2% unemployment. The last graph is the lighter blue, the final one, and that's the number of people employed in With County and have taxes being paid for them. In 2014, that was about 13,000 people, just a hair shy of that, and now we're at 13,695, an increase of about 700 folks. Despite an aging population and a little bit of population decline, that's actually a really positive number to have 700 more people in our workforce. One thing a lot of people talk about, I do not have a graph for it, there, this data's not really good at the local level, but labor force participation, the number of people that could work and how many are working of the people that can't work. Nationally, our level in 1999, just for information, 67.3%, that was the all-time high. Right now, the current level is 62.6%. In the last 70 years, that number was only, 70 years went down to 58.1%, that was in 1954. So we're somewhere in between those measures on high and low for where labor participation is. In Virginia, the state average is about 66.5%, and in the past five decades, the highest hit in 1992 were 71% labor participation, so 5% more. The lowest hit, as you might imagine, during COVID, and it was, the bottom was not as far as I thought it might be, 63.5%, so just 3% less than we got today. I know I've blown through a whole lot of information, I wouldn't draw your attention to the one page that John did, it's got information about our more recent announcement at Musser Lumber, Musser Biomass and Wood Products. Mr. Cook represented the county that day, and I spoke. John goes into some detail about strategic plan. This year, our tenure awards, interestingly, only the newest business we awarded had 20 years of business in With County, and the oldest was 65 years with Farmers Mill and Supply. I know I've gone through a whole lot in a short amount of time, or what I hope is a short amount of time. If it's not, you can judge your questions accordingly, but I'll answer any questions y'all might have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Manley?
I don't have any questions, but thank you. Thanks for all your hard work and your team.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. We've, like I said at the outset, we've got a very strong team, and I do everything I can to keep it together because the work one does really reflects well on the rest of us, so I very much rely on the two people I work with, so thank you for that. I'll share that with them.
And you entered these days, but you forgot the third one. Jessica's new baby.
Oh, Oscar. Oscar Lewis is our newest intern at three months old. And I didn't realize how much a baby would bring down somebody's blood pressure in the office, but I can, I'm living proof that just calms a man of a certain age down very much when a baby's in the office.
See if I can borrow it about like every, like twice a month, second, fourth, Tuesday.
Well, when he was pretty new, he's, now he's in daycare, we don't see him as much, and I'm trying to work our storage room in the back in some sort of makeshift daycare to get it permitted.
All right, yeah, definitely. Thank you, and John and Jessica, David, for y'all's hard work. Next, we've got a tobacco commission agreement.
Yes, Mr. Manley's here. This is a performance agreement he has provided to us, Twin County and West, who started industrial development authority. This is for $1,022,000. The plan used for these funds is for expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. These funds, with this performance agreement, will be issued in arrears, which means as the performance measures are met, the county can draw down and receive their funds back. I will indicate while it's called a grant, and I am not trying to disparage the Tobacco Commission, the last section though does include a revenue sharing agreement, and that is that we do have to provide 5% of any new taxes that we receive back to the Tobacco Commission to reimburse them 105% of this $1,022,000 grant. So in some respects, it's a low-interest loan instead of a grant, but just wanted to bring that up. It's been standard for them over the last five or six years, so, but we recommend approval of the performance agreement.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Tobacco Commission agreement as presented.
So moved.
All right, have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that document? Just a target, a target where it says 1,044 jobs?
Yep.
What, is the company going to pay it back if that doesn't happen?
Well, this will be drawn down in arrears, so if they meet those targets, we will get money, and if we do not meet that target, then we do not get those funds.
Okay. All right, any more questions or discussion? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, and Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 All right, so approved. Next, we have Mount Rogers Community Services Performance Contract.
Mr. Chairman, this is the annual performance contract that they send to us, put on the board package for your review. You all can accept this performance contract, or if you would like to schedule someone from Mount Rogers to come and review this with you prior to your acceptance, we can do so. But it is pretty much a standard process, they send this contract to us every year with the updated their expectations and goals for the year.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the Mount Rogers Community Services Performance Contract. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, and Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have the With Grayson Regional Library 75th Anniversary Resolution. Mr. Bear, I believe we have Ms. Thomas and Ms. Buck, and some, huh?
Several of them.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say former board members.
Yes, they are all here, they get to enjoy sitting here for this amount of timeframe, I do not know if you would like to make the presentation, Mr. Chairman, or how you'd like to do it. But, please, With Grayson Regional Library is celebrating 75 years. I won't say that Ms. Lester was there or wasn't.
I don't know.
You know, if you say that, you can deal with Miss Lester every week.
You can now cause problems.
If y'all would like to come on up? And she throws up, and she, a little bit in the highlight of the night.
All right, Resolution 2023-27, recognizing the 75th anniversary of the With Grayson Regional Library. Whereas the With Grayson Regional Library has been a vital institution within our community for the past 75 years, serving as a beacon of knowledge, learning, and cultural enrichment. And whereas the With County, whereas the With Grayson Regional Library was established on August 1, 1948, with the noble mission of providing free and equal access to information, literature, and resources for all residents within our region. And whereas the With Grayson Regional Library has consistently upheld its commitment to fostering the love of reading, supporting educational endeavors, and promoting lifelong learning among the people of all ages. And whereas the With Grayson Regional Library has been an essential resource for students, researchers, professionals, and community members, offering a wide range of materials, programs, and services that have enriched the life of homeless individuals. And whereas the With Grayson Regional Library has continually adapted to the changing needs and demands of the digital era, embracing technology and expanding its digital collections and services to ensure widespread access to information and resources in the modern age. And whereas the With Grayson Regional Library has played a significant role in promoting literacy, providing computer and internet access to underserved populations, facilitating community engagement through workshops, seminars, and events, and fostering a sense of belonging amongst diverse groups. And whereas the With Grayson Regional Library has collaborated with educational institutions, local organizations, and community partners to create innovative programs that enhance educational outcomes, encourage lifelong learning, and support the personal and professional development of individuals throughout the region. And whereas the With Grayson Regional Library has been an invaluable community hub, bringing people together, fostering social connections, and promoting cultural understanding through its diverse range of activities, exhibits, and initiatives. And whereas, excuse me, the 75th anniversary of the With Grayson Regional Library represents a momentous milestone in its history, symbolizing the enduring impact it has made on generations of residents, and the ongoing commitment to serve future generations with excellence. Now therefore be it resolved that the board supervisors of With County, Virginia hereby recognizes and celebrates the 75th anniversary of the With Grayson Regional Library as a cherished institution that has played an integral role in the intellectual education and social fabric of our community. And be it further resolved that the board supervisors of With County, Virginia commends the dedicated librarians, staff, volunteers, and supporters of the With Grayson Regional Library for their unwavering dedication, passion, and commitment to providing invaluable resources, services, and opportunities for personal growth and enrichment. Be it further resolved that the board supervisors of With County, Virginia encourages all residents of our region to take part in festivities, programs, and events organized by the With Grayson Regional Library to commemorate the significant milestone, recognizing the library's contributions and reaffirming our collective commitment to fostering a culture of literacy, learning, and intellectual curiosity within our community. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to the With Grayson Regional Library as a token of our appreciation and support for their exceptional contributions to our community's intellectual and cultural well-being. Side by side, that's a lot of chat. But that, I would entertain a motion for Resolution 2023-26. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Cook, do I have a second? Second. Have a second by Mr. Horny, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved, and congratulations. And thanks later. We have to stand here for Elizabeth.
You're going to have to come back.
And if we give her five or 15 minutes.
She'll take a medium picture.
They just drag her along.
They just drag her around.
Thank you. I know, my contacts are drying out. I had a problem with a couple of those words because my contacts are drying out, and I thought Ms. Lester was going to smack my hand. All right, anything else under new business, Mr. Bear?
Uh, no, sir, I do not have any additional items.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
Mr. Farthing? All right, we'll go to board reports, board supervisors.
Before we go, do we have a, we have a picnic this Friday?
I do, I've.
And I would like to bear a reminder to the county offices for the picnic.
All right, I have a motion, the county, close the county offices this Friday at 12:00 noon, so that our employees can attend the county picnic. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
This is for all except for one of the water employees, and he's got to work.
That's between you and me.
I take exception to you taking my cornhole partner, Mr. Horny.
That's the reason I was wanting him to have to work.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Now we'll move on to board reports, have board supervisors' time. Mr. Terry, we'll start with you on the telephone.
Nothing at this time, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Burnett?
I don't have nothing at this time, thank you, Chairman.
Ms. Lawson?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. Cook?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Boy, that's getting ready to change. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I got, I got a few things, Mr. Chairman. First thing I got is Lead Mines Part Lot, Mr. Hankins, I think they may have reached out to you. I've seen that on the way to church on Sunday and went back, and it is a mess.
It is. Mr. Kinzer has been working with the paving company, they're going to repave that and the Ivanhoe Lot. The mix that they got wasn't from the Withfull Asphalt Plant, it was from the Mount Airy Plant, so it had an extended time to get here, so they put it down, it was probably too cold for that, and we don't know exactly what was in that base mix, so they should be fixing the problem. I don't have a timeframe for that yet, but they are working with Johnny to get us a commitment on that.
So that just generated a recommendation. If we, on contracts that we use, if we're using a contractor, we should use the local asphalt companies instead of, I'm not from Mount Airy.
Yeah, I understand, they were going to, but the. They closed down, yeah. The local plant was closed down that day, so in order to get the work done, they went to the Mount Airy Plant. The work that was done at the trash and recycling centers is from the local plant, and it's fine.
And I was going to go over and look at the Ivanhoe Lot, but I didn't make it over there, but I know the one at Lead Mines is in pretty rough shape.
They're experiencing the same issues at Ivanhoe.
Okay. Hager Springs Road, have you heard anything from VDOT on that?
I have not heard anything additional from them on that. I will do another follow-up with them on that one and see. I will say that I've been very impressed with their current interim residence administration, been very responsible on anything we have sent, in fact, sent one to him just yesterday, and he had an answer that afternoon on it, so, but I'll follow up with him on Hager Springs.
So when you speak to him, can you add guardrail on Lot Scout and Press Jackson Road, right there in the curb? That's beat up pretty bad. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Horny?
The only thing I have is another VDOT thing. I sent an email last week to Mr. Hankins, and I don't know if you, I presumed you sent it to VDOT, but I called today in the Bay Tree Lane, the man that I talked to said they had not touched the road, so can we aggravate VDOT a little bit more and see if they'll, see what they can do about it? I would appreciate it, and I know they would.
Bay Tree Lane, correct?
Yep, Bay Tree Lane and Ivanhoe. And I believe that was all I had.
All right. Mr. Bear, I sent you an email, and I know you're getting caught up, I've been on pothole patrol. I've been on pothole patrol. I sent you one about Kinder Valley.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure you got, like I said, I know you're getting called up, but I gave them the best directions I could give them because it wasn't really near residents, but that road is really nice, and if they don't fix those potholes, then this winter, they're just going to spread. And besides that, just wanted to welcome back our teachers. They started back this week, and the little ones will be going back to school next Tuesday.
It depends on what grade you're in.
Yeah, so welcome back to them, congratulations, parents, and be careful in the school zones. But besides that, that's all I have.
That's just more revenue, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I will share one quick thing with you. We had a scheduling conflict tonight with this meeting. There was a youth hockey event at the Apex Center hosted by the, the new team, and they didn't know how many students or how many young people to expect. I think they were optimistically hoping for about 20. They had over 75 show up from as far away as Mount Arrie, had them from Mount Arrie, from Blaine County, from all the communities in With County, so they, they got to actually go inside and play on the concrete floor rather than playing in the parking lot.
Excellent, so good deal. All right, does anybody else have anything to come before the board? If not, we'll be adjourned.